Borough of Manhattan, it's 7 East 19th Street, located within the Ladies Mile Historic District, docket number 166478, block 848, lot 7. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness in Neo-Grec style store building designed by Thomas R. Jackson and built in 1885-86. Application is to recreate missing masonry features on the front facade and install storefront infill. And this is also an appli-- second component of this is an application for modification of use. 70th 19th Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, docket number 166356. A Neo-Grec store building designed by Thomas R. Jackson and built in 1885-86. Application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to City Planning Commission relating to an application for an authorization pursuant to Section 1526, 20B of the zoning resolution to permit conversion of commercial space to residential.
Okay, good afternoon, Mary Ann Hurley, Preservation Staff. This five-story cast iron building is located on the north side of East 19th Street between Broadway and Fifth Avenue. The proposal was for an authorization for a change of use from commercial to residential at the second floor and for the restoration of the front facade to recreate missing metal features, not masonry. This work includes the recrea-- recreation in fiberglass of a pedimented top floor cornice, as you can see in the proposal on the right and the left, decorative features at floors two to five, and a storefront cornice. Previously, the storefront infill was to be approved at the public hearing, but it was recently redesigned to meet staff-level goals. In addition to the storefront infill, the front facade work to be approved at a staff level, just to give you the background here, includes the repair and repainting of existing historic features and the replacement in kind of the windows at floors two to five. The restoration will be based on historic photographs and paint analysis. The project before you today in part is because of the proposed use of fiberglass for a building that will be required to be restored and maintained at first-class condition per the restrictive declaration. The project architect, Jeff Cole, is here today to present the project.
Thank you. So unfortunately, this projected scale, the existing-condition photograph is pretty darn fuzzy, but what we did was, staff suggestion, is tone in every piece of the facade that is missing, which is pretty much every feature that couldn't be stripped off and keep the building in place. These edacul-type elements running up the side, there's some, you can hardly see because of the increased projected scale of this, but there's some pieces of capital that are missing, and then everything here is gone from the building, as you can see from this photograph right here. Unfortunately, extensive historical research only came up with the first item we came up with, which of course was a tax photo, so we could not find any other documentation of the building. I would want to modify slightly what Mary Ann had said, because we're working right now with one of the press metal companies to replicate some of this with press metal, and we're still trying to figure that out. But we do believe that the top piece, the size of this, the scale of it and everything, is going to lend itself, as far as economic viability is concerned, to some kind of plastic recreation. One of the-- and the fabricator, who is a historic fabricator of elements, suggests, in fact, that this might be better because of the size of it, the scale, concerns of expansion and contraction in PVC elements, which they're familiar with, that have less of an expansion/contraction coefficient than fiberglass. So we're still working on this stuff, and I think we'll resolve it at staff level when we get some of the proposals back. But the, these elements here, we believe we will be working with the press metal manufacturer you're familiar with, BPC Metal, you have an example of their work outside in the antechamber. The storefront is predicated, to the best of our ability, on this historic photograph, and possibly the small prints that you see there might be better for this, but there is a central, unlike what you sometimes see, there is a central entrance to the original building right there. This, of course, was a blank panel originally because it was the elevator shaft, at least going way back from the original to the building. Okay, all right, so, doesn't seem to be moving, of course. Just give it a second, I've got a little. Here, thank you. So what we've done is, we've, because these pieces are entirely missing, for the most part, we've, as part of our working with staff, we, to the best of our ability, interpreted what was very fuzzy historic photograph for each missing element coming down through the building, including pieces of capital. So this one, we have documentation of, of course, because it's a small piece of a capital that exists elsewhere in cast iron, so we'll be able to mold this one piece right here. But the rest of this is missing entirely from the entire building, so, and much of it was in shadows, so to the best of our ability, we interpreted those elements with staff and are fabricating according to these large-scale drawings that we prepared as part of our presentation. At the same time, we did our paint analysis of the building, and the, this has faded to a very light brown in this projection in this room, but this is a very dark, almost blackish-brown color that all the windows were originally, as well as the storefront on the first floor, so, and the upper floors. What they were was, apparently, the first paint on this was an opaque color overlaid with a glaze, and talking to staff, the suggestion was it would be done in an opaque color that was the approximation here of the glaze over the original opaque color that was the undercoat. There you go. So this is just a blow-up of the storefront, because there is nothing left of the storefront, so that the transom windows are being fabricated for new, the transom bars being fabricated, the whole cloth, and so are the three bays below it. And going back for one second, pointing out that although it's a separate application, every bit of a stored window sash that is, that is reparable, repairable, I guess, is going to be repaired, and the few pieces that are missing or destroyed because of the air conditioning and other things installed over the course of the history of this building will be replicated to match the pieces that we restore. And the transom windows at the first floor have a slight arched top that reflects what is happening on the second floor, then you have the reverse arch here, then you have a large arch and another arch there, so we're trying to pick up those details as we move up through the building. And this is the pedimented element, which we believe, due to its kind of tripartite configuration above the cornice line, there are concerns about elements this large, as far as fabrication, or as far as maintenance and appearance being, having to do with seeming and expansion/contraction, because we have these two kind of squat columnar elements, we plan on fabricating these in four quad-- or four elements, I guess, the structural elevation, that can be seen behind the, seen, excuse me, behind the columns in a way you can't be seen. So I think that might be it, because it's not much more than the front facade.
Can you just tell us on the first side, you said some areas have been, are going to be restored with metal and others are not?
Yes, or, again, we're given the viability of that, but we believe that the edacules can all be done in metal, the smaller elements coming up here. We have to cast this little piece of flourish, floral element that's missing, so we'll probably do that in a fiberglass-type element. And, and then we're proposing to do this in a plastic element of some sort, whether it's fiberglass or PVC, based on the recommendations of the fabricator.
Okay, and what about the, the cornice or the, yes, that?
This can be in press metal as well, because it's mostly flat in profile, with a very slight arch, so we could use this in press metal down at the lowest level as well. And since we're doing the largest of these edacul elements, in press metal as well, I don't see an issue with that.
Okay, and the reason why you can't do the pediment is for...
Scale and cost is a big consideration at that size. We're still working--
Well, there are two issues. Is it, is it, is it because it's costly?
Well, we're not sure yet, to be honest with you, because we haven't got anyone in the metal industry to respond to us positively with a proposal, so I'm not sure.
All right, and I just have one other question, maybe a couple, actually.
Sure.
Are you adding space on top?
That's part of a separate proposal, because it's not visible, so--
Okay, so that's being done at staff level?
That was at staff level.
I see, okay, but, okay, and, but this is a change of use that you're requesting?
On the second floor.
On the second floor, because the remaining is--
Already residential, approved as of right.
I see, so it's just the second-floor conversion?
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Yes?
I have a few.
Yes.
The pilasters going up, the flanking pilasters on the ends of the buildings, are they not cast iron?
Yes.
And so the pieces on them, the capitals, would have been cast iron as well?
Yes.
Not sheet metal? But you're proposing to replace them with sheet metal?
Yes, we are.
Second thing--
Have may, uh--
May, may I ask what sheet metal companies you've contacted who have not responded to you?
B and B, people that have actually got the sample outside. When I say not responded, they have yet to get back to us with a proposal, so we're waiting.
Okay. So your approach to that, that pediment is essentially based on what, then?
You mean the fabrication intent?
Fiberglass versus sheet metal?
Well, at this point, again, and I, as I said, I think that we have to continue our conversation with staff, we're still waiting to hear back from sheet metal companies on that, so I can't say we made a definitive decision on that. We've got, we sent the drawings out to both fiberglass manufacturers and metal, and the BPC metal, and we have yet to hear back from them, so we just have proposals. And conversations about fabrication techniques and seam concealment from the fiberglass people, so I'm mentioning that, because that's what we have so far.
Yes, any other quest-- any other questions, Robert?
One, that is, maybe it's sort of tricky, so if we were, what are we, what would be approved?
Right, well, it seems to me that, I know, they, since they haven't heard back from the, the sheet metal manufacturers, they are proposing fiberglass, or some plastic, is it fiberglass?
At this point, at this piece at least--
What are you--
Yes.
So what are you proposing?
I would say, you know, we are willing to work with a sheet metal company if we can get the sheet metal companies to respond to us.
Right, but what is the proposal before us right now?
Well, the proposal for us right now would be sheet metal, sheet metal, sheet metal, sheet metal, sheet metal, sheet metal, sheet metal. Cast fiberglass for the missing piece of this capital right here, and fiberglass for similar material for, actually, for this. Which is a part of, you know, which is a fiberglass cornice, is a big component of that.
I, I think I just, unless others know what it looks like, we'd just love to see comparable samples of, of the sheet metal with detail, this kind of detail, and fiberglass, because I really don't, I don't think I understand the difference.
Yeah, it, it's been my experience that you cannot replicate the crisp arises in fiberglass that you can recreate with stamped sheet metal or break form sheet metal. And, but whether or not that would be an issue at that point, I don't know, but I would, I would be very reluctant to approve this personally without seeing some samples of both.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, we'll take public test of any, Barbara Zay?
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HDC applauds the restoration of this elegant store building, especially the reintroduction of the parapet. We would ask, however, that better quality materials be employed for the execution of this work. For a truly top-notch restoration, the use of the building's original materials, rather than fiberglass, which does not age well, would have a huge impact. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers on this item? All right, Community Board Five sent in a recommendation which recommends approval of this application. All right, are there any other questions for the applicant?
Just that we're--
Yes.
It would be great to see this building restored. It's, it's, this block is sad at this part of the, of the street, and it'll be terrific to see it as it was once.
So if we want to see it in metal instead of the fiberglass, then if we're voting, have to vote against it here, we can't, so--
Well, they, okay, so there are a couple of things. If the commission, first of all, I agree, it's a great restoration project, they are getting some benefits from that by going to City Planning and having their ability to waive the use regulations, but overall, I think it's just a great improvement to the building. If the commission, well, the commission can do a few things. If we feel that it's absolutely essential that we want sheet metal, based on just our conversation right now, it seems that they, with that material, are able to get these crisp edges, which you may not be able to get with fiberglass, then we can, we can require that, and hopefully, they may agree to do it and say that that's what we want, we want sheet metal for all these elements. Alternatively, if, if it's an issue of them still proposing fiberglass, and I think that we would want to at least see some examples, because that's what I'm getting, I agree with Addie, I'm not sure what, whether, how noticeable it is, and whether you can discern it from the ground floor, but at the very minimum, we'd want additional information to support that. Other questions or comments?
I think, I think that the fiberglass could be okay that high up. I have seen it, and the, the real problem with the fiberglass for me is the wide joints, which are very visible from a good distance, because of the needs for expansion and contraction in the material. And you wouldn't have that here, because you have lots of places to hide them, and they've talked about how to deal with that. I mean, of course, the metal would be better, and I, I think we should just say metal, and if they can't do metal, we'll come back and, you know, he was saying he was open to it, so let's just go with the, with what everyone seems to think is the better product.
Okay.
Sure.
And that seems fine, so basically, it's all, it's metal, that's what we would be requiring you to do. Okay? All right, there are no other, yes, sorry, somebody, yes, Michael?
We would have a second vote on whether they can convert from commercial to residential, is this two different?
Right, so, so there are two issues here. One is, yes, there are two votes, one is for this restoration work, and the second is to, I think the standard, Mark, what's the standard, that we're saying it's for the city planning application? We're, we're voting on--
We call it an MOU, notification, use and fault.
Right.
Basically, report to the city plan--
Okay, report.
Says that they're agreeing to a, do this preservation work and a sizable maintenance program, and we'll support that application in the city plan.
Okay. I know, I just, the applicants understand this, do you want to say anything, because we haven't closed the record as yet?
Well, I think the only thing I would say is that--
Yes, if you can just--
At this scale right here, I would like to at least, again, if it's approved right now and only metal, then we will have to come back if we decide that we want to argue for something other than that. We may be working towards samples on this to see if they're acceptable weight there at the top, okay? But we're not sure yet, but I, I don't think we have a problem with anything else in press metal, we just haven't got enough feedback back from everyone to make sure--
Right.
It's always executable, so we're waiting. So, I mean, if you want to do it always as all metal, and we can't do that, then we'll have to come back.
Okay, all right. And we can move ahead with this right now. So why do we close the hearing? And Addie, would you like to read that?
In the matter of 7 East 19th Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, the application is to recreate missing masonry features on the front facade. Is that true? Masonry pieces, uh, for each, on the front? Metal, right, so this is. On the front facade, sorry, let me read that. Application is to recreate missing metal features on the front facade and install storefront infill. I approve this, finding that the removal of the existing storefront infill, metal roll-down gates and metal doors will eliminate unsympathetic alterations that detract from the significant architectural features of the building without causing the removal of historic fabric. That the new wood storefront infill, consisting of two pairs of paneled and glazed doors, a storefront window, and transom windows, will be based on materials profiles detailed and finish of storefront infill found elsewhere throughout the Ladies Mile Historic District. That installing a new metal cornice at the top of the building and decorative features at floors two to five will return these missing historic features to the front facade based on historic photographs, and that the facade restoration work will return the building closer to its historic appearance.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Application's been approved.
Again, in the matter of 7 East 19th Street, Ladies Mile Historic District, the application is to, the application is to request that Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to City Planning Commission relating to an application for an authorization pursuant to Section 15-206 of the zoning resolution to permit conversion of commercial space to residential, Zone M105. I recommend approval, finding that the restorative work, including the replacement of the existing storefront infill, the repair and replacement of existing cast iron historic features, the restoration of missing features, and the installation of new windows to match the store, will be approved pursuant to LPC 17-7031, will return the building closer to its original appearance. That the exterior facade work will reinforce the architectural and historic character of the building, streetscape, and the Ladies Mile Historic District. That the restorative work will bring the building up to a sound first-class condition and aid in its long-term preservation. That the implementation of a cyclical maintenance plan will ensure the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition. And that the owners of the building have committed themselves to establishing a cyclical, cyclical maintenance plan that will legally, be legally enforceable by Landmarks Preservation Commission under the provisions of a restrictive declaration, which will bind all heirs, successors, and the sign, and which will be reported after the work, and will be registered as office.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Application's been approved.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll move to item number 15. It's an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan, docket number 166208, for 281 Park Avenue South, Church, Mission's House, Protestant Welfare Agency's Individual Landmark, Borough of Manhattan, block 877, lot 89, a Flemish revival-style institutional building designed by Robert W. Gibson and Edward J. N. Stent and built in 1892 through 94. Application is to replace ground store, ground floor infill and install a barrier-free access ramp.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ward Dennis, Preservation Staff. This application is for 281 Park Avenue South, an individual landmark, Church, Mission's House, Protestant Welfare Agency's building, and is to replace modern infill and install a barrier-free access ramp with the ground floor infill. Ward Dennis and Dan Shannon are here to present.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Ward Dennis, with Higgins Creek Park. The building in question is an individual landmark at the southeast corner of Park Avenue South and 22nd Street, designed in 1892 and completed in 1894 by Gibson and Stent. It was originally used as the headquarters for the mission program to the Episcopal Church, and from its time of construction, has always had retail at the base. The retail at the base was actually part of the original program to help support the operations of the, of the mission societies. The existing storefronts will be replaced, existing storefronts were installed circa 1980, there is no historic fabric. We are also going to be relocating the entrance to the upper floors of the building, to the office floors of the building, to an existing entrance on 22nd Street, and repurposing this main entry on Park Avenue South as a retail entry. The proposed is shown on the right here. You have in your packet some historic photographs that show the evolution of the building over time. As originally constructed, it had, it had very large openings at the ground floor. The building is actually a steel-framed construction. The designation report says that it may be the first steel-framed construction building in the city, in essence, a short skyscraper. And you can see that in the size of these ground floor openings, they're very large, not something that would be doable in masonry. The original storefronts had transoms with multi-lights and a bulkhead that came up to the base of the, of the granite bases. These were replaced, if you look at the 1910 photo, in 1909, all of the storefronts were replaced with these projecting storefronts that had full lights of glass at the base and transoms above. Our proposal draws on both the original and the 1910 in the amount of glazing and the historic details. And then you can see some existing-condition photos in your packet on a separate page right on the bottom right, and this, and these are the 1980 storefronts. The existing bulkheads are granite, they actually come up a little higher than the historic bulkheads by about two to four inches, and then it's aluminum infill with very minimal framing on them. In plan, as I mentioned, the main entrance on Park Avenue South, part of the program here is to create a full, continuous retail space at the base of the building. This will be reused as the retail entry, and there's an existing secondary entry on 22nd Street, this 22nd Street, which will be the new entry to a commercial lobby for the upper floors. We are proposing an ADA ramp at the 22nd Street entry, and then this is, this shows the full retail configuration. So the existing condition on your left, in your packet, this is the rendering, there are also drawn elevations in your packages, with the 1980 storefronts, including glass and metal infill at these, at these main front portal entries. The proposal for the storefronts is to recreate the original 1892, 1894 bulkhead in metal, that will come up to the level that it did historically, which matches where the granite transitions into limestone and into the colonnades, the engaged colonnades at the side, and then to do full lights of glass above. We, we're not removing any historic fabric here, and in fact, we're able to tuck the glass behind the masonry openings, so that we're not impacting any of the historic fabric, and basically creating a very clean, very minimalist look that celebrates the large openings at the base of the building. The, and you can see there are photos in your packet of blown-up details of those historic photos, where you can see the original bulkhead with its paneled base, there was actually, it's actually a churned wrought iron grill in front, and then a projecting sill above, and that's what we'll be recreating on all the storefronts. If you'll notice, the 1890s configuration did have entries at some of the storefront entries. In the 1910 configuration, all of the large openings were full glass without entries, so they had secondary entries elsewhere. And then this is the East 22nd Street view, again, you have a drawn elevation in your package. You'll see that the bulkheads actually rise as they go to east on 22nd Street due to a grade change, and we pick that up as we come across. And then the ADA ramp, which will be done in bluestone, which matches the stone at the existing steps here, and then new contemporary stainless steel railings for, for the guardrails and the like. This ramp actually wraps around the existing, we're not removing any of the existing historic fabric at the base of these columns, we're simply coming around them, and we're holding off the side of the building, so there will still be space between the ramp and these bays here. I'll let Dan Shannon run you through some of the details on how we're doing these storefronts.
Thank you, Ward. Dan Shannon--
And answer any questions, Jim.
Dan Shannon and the AS Architects, thank you for the opportunity to discuss our proposal with you. As Ward said, there are two remarkable things about the building, and that's the innovative use of steel at the time to create the building, which allowed for, as he referenced, these large ground floor openings in the building. And the second thing was the remarkable quality of the carved limestone and-- And the second thing was the remarkable quality of the carved limestone and granite of the building. And as Ward said, we want to celebrate, reference, and reinforce those elements of the building in the recreation of the storefront. As Ward said, the existing condition is a large unadorned granite base that doesn't align with the original base or bulkhead, and Ward doesn't align with any other elements. A painted bronze mullion system with a black opaque spandrel above, which reduces the height of the great volume of space that is inside, which is natural to the entire building. This proposal, as Ward said, reproduces the metal base of the building, the black metal base of the building, which, as he said, is got the turned wrought iron grill and framing around it, which keys in to all of the elements of the... of the granite and limestone base with the bull nose coinciding with the O G curve at the toe of the... of the existing piers coming down. And then with that... going wrong. What we show here is, of course, some of the detailing of the bulkhead of the building, and then filling in what is essentially a thirteen-and-a-half-foot by thirteen-and-a-half-foot open space. We'd like to do a slip-in, a monolithic panel of glass behind the masonry, and sealing that with a hard gasket area, so there's nothing in contact or diminishing the quality and the... of the existing limestone carving of the building. So this is some of the details that we've attended to this. In... in these two views, you see as a before-after of the existing condition, the new bulkhead, and then the new glass elements, and this also shows our proposal for the retail signage, which is simply silicone, structural silicone adhered lettering on the glass itself, nothing attached to the masonry in that. Again, you can see what I refer to as the opaque area, which will now become clear with a good vision into the entire building. And with this drawing and with its companion is showing us the detail of our intention, as Ward also referenced, of concealing all the glazing elements behind the stone without effect of the stone. All attachments are back to the existing superstructure of the building, and no attachment to the masonry. And as I referenced, and we're showing here, is some of the quality of the carving that is throughout the building, top to bottom, it's remarkable. And I wanted to also show... well, let me talk about the glass for a minute. Thirteen by thirteen, as you all can imagine, is a large piece of glass, and it is a single assembly of glass. However, it's laminated inside to accommodate the size. So there will be this glass lamination or splice line, which you can barely see there, but it is a monolithic glass, you can see.
Is that going to be horizontally?
Well, we're planning, yes. We're planning for it to be horizontal, which essentially aligns with that, right along there. And that glass, you will see, it's the same glass, it's in the cube, the apple cube, and you can... there are a number of those splices inside those large pieces of glass, and without close inspection, are you aware that it's actually been spliced? And then, just going to the ramp, which Ward discussed, which is on the side street, we have a change in plane that accommodates the existing steps. Large pieces of bluestone matching the threshold going into the door will be put in place. There are essentially two steps, and a ramp that moves towards Park Avenue South, towards the west, because that's the lower part, so it's the shorter part of the ramp. And all of that handrail will be done in satin stainless steel. Everything else in the job will be painted a dark metal, not quite black, but a very, very dark gray that's, I believe, is consistent and complementary to the masonry. However, all of the door handles on the job, the... the elements that you do touch, the hardware you do touch, will be stainless steel. We found is that the painted metal or the darkened stainless or statuary bronzes are... don't wear very well, and we want to, of course, maintain the quality of that building. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for the applicant? Questions? Roberta, yes?
Now, you talked about celebrating some features of the existing building, but in your storefront, you don't want to talk about or essentially feature the transoms, which seem to have been an important part throughout sort of the history of the building. How do you...
Well, I think we're... our focus has been on just the wonderful scale of that opening, and then just referencing that through the way that the signage is done, and also really to celebrate the scale of the space inside, which has always been a part of the... the volume of space that was created.
Clearly, what we're... what we're looking for with the glass is to do something that's very minimalist and sort of references back to that nineteen oh nine period when they went in with the full sections of glass for the projecting storefronts. And we played with a lot of options of ripping on some of that or trying to... try to draw some of that in, and ultimately, we came to this that just sort of very simply puts the bulkhead back in place, that sort of establishes the right dado, and then, again, very simply puts the glass ends, leave the openings as clean as possible.
The only other thing is, in the back of the book are some references here in New York that went through this process, which also preserved, restored the existing historic fabric, and then infilled with a rather large light of glass, I think, very successfully, as well as there's a project in, I believe, Bordeaux, I think that does it very successfully as well.
I think... it's not that I don't think it could work, because I'm just thinking because the building's an individual landmark and the transom seems to have been an important part, that I'm not saying, you know, if something is recreated, you know, based on some other... one of the older examples, but something that at least suggests that there was a transom there, so that's a really important thing. And you have that line, but I don't think that that's strong enough, but that's...
All right. Other questions? Okay. Why don't we take testimony? We may call you back. Barbara Zay?
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. This spectacular building's original storefront is an integral feature in the overall design and composition of the facades. H D C finds the proposed large panes of glass, which are without the transoms and divisions that fit into the building's rhythm, to be inappropriate, especially considering the amount of documentation that exists with the design of the original storefront. We ask that the proposed storefront be redesigned to reflect the original and/or in a way that mirrors the building's ornate style. Thank you.
Thank you. Krista Belga?
Krista Belga for the Society for the Architecture of the City. The Protestant Welfare Agencies have left us, and yesterday, the Bible Society announced in the Wall Street Journal that they were moving to Philadelphia because people come to New York to shop and not, quote, "to learn about our nation's history and the Bible." This seems rather harsh, and the possibility of combining the two is real. Soho and the Ladies Mile have shown us that shopping in an historic building can be a pleasure in itself. Entrepreneurs can accommodate historic architecture and thrive. At two eighty-one Park Avenue South, the new design is, we think, taking a wrong turn. Rather than adopting a formulaic approach to the display windows with an expanse of plate glass that is out of scale for this individual landmark, why not revisit the original design, which is well-recorded in photographs? Many people have found it thrilling to dance and later to shop in a deconsecrated Upjohn Church on Sixth Avenue. Old decor doesn't necessarily spoil the fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right. Community Board Five sent in their resolution. They proposed... they said that the ADA compliant ramp is acceptable, but they recommend denial of the application for the proposed new storefront window replacement, relocation of the entry doors, and improving ADA compliance. An ADA compliance. All right. Yes?
Yeah, just, I think we touched on some of this with Commissioner Washington's questions. The... first off, the building was built with storefronts, so they knew that New York is where you came to shop, and they sent their missions out from this building. So, uh... the retail was always very important, and we think that it is appropriate in this case because we're not removing any of the historic fabric. We are creating a very clean and very minimalist opening that is appropriate to the base of this building, and frankly, we think it works, and we think that there is more than one appropriate way to approach the building.
Okay. I just have one question, Ward, yes? So I know you've shown this photograph of nineteen-ten where they... so at that time, they removed what was originally the storefront, correct?
Yeah.
And they had this bump out. Do you know how long that remained? Was it there for the portion? Where did it sort of...
The nineteen-ten storefronts were there, I believe, through designation.
I see.
Uh... they do appear in the designation photo in the designation report.
So then, after that, presumably, this commission then approved what is there to date?
Yes. I'm a little fuzzy on that. There's a reference to a nineteen-sixty storefront replacement, but there... these storefronts, the nineteen-ten storefronts do appear in the designation photos from the designation report in seventy-nine.
Okay. But what makes you think that this nineteen-ten is a full plate? I mean, where the canopy is could be concealing a transom, no?
There's a transom above the canopy. The canopy, I believe, was a prism glass to allow more light in. The whole storefront projected out, and that base was a single plate of glass. We don't see any divisions in the historic photos and in the books. There was a transom above that, above that projecting storefront.
So every era shows a transom?
Yes.
Until now, until your...
Is a designation photograph in here somewhere? Uh... no.
and just about the ramp on the Twenty-Second Street side, there's no way to negotiate the entry interior with the... with the door coming all the way to the ground?
Yeah, that would require lowering the entire slab of the building to do it on the inside.
But you're heading to the other floors, right? There are stairs now.
There are stairs there now.
I see, I see. Okay.
So that would be taking out that historic fabric.
I see. I didn't understand there were stairs.
Yeah, so there are the two stairs up, and again, the ramp goes in this direction because that's uphill, so we get a shorter ramp. If we went this direction, we'd probably be off our property line.
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Comments? Yes, Michael.
Okay with the ramp as it is, but I think just the fact that there's enough documentation depicting a transom at the storefront windows in each of these eras begs that there be a transom in the new design. I think the... it's admirable that they're bringing the dado back at the base of the window. I think they need to retain the transoms.
Okay. Other comments? Yes?
Yeah. I think it's great that they're bringing back the metal base, and I think that this building can take it, can take not having the transoms. It's... and I think that this particular team and developer has a lot of respect for these kind of buildings, so I actually would approve it without the transoms and open view.
All right. Other comments? Yes, Michael?
I'm... I think... I think that it could take it, but I'm not sure that that would be the best thing to do in terms of a visual landmark like this.
Can you speak into the mic? That's so consistent and so robust and so intact. I think the fact that... that there has been... my... my draw to the... to the transom as a... as a thing to do comes from this rendering on the right, where the... where the base just all of a sudden looks out of scale with the rest of the building. There's no scale-giving elements, and that's part of the intent. By removing the frames, by removing all indications above that base, you're really rendering it as a whole, and I think that there are some buildings where that works. I don't think this is one of them. I think that the building is so decorative and so... if you look at the historic photograph, there was clearly an initial intention to bring down the geometric order of the... of the windows above into the storefront zone, and then have it transition at the transom. And I think that that's something that could be done in a very modern way, that would use modern materials and be elegant, and not necessarily be replicative, but that could somehow engage the building in a dialogue with the present without sacrificing the initial intention of the relationship between the storefronts and the building above.
All right. Other comments? Any other comments? All right. So, um... I... I think I tend to agree with Addie, which is, I think that the building can take it. I think that, uh... the materials that they use for construction, the piers that come down, the fact that they're including the metal bulkhead, I think is helpful in, and I think good, in sort of establishing still the integrity of the building as a historic, as a designated landmark. So, uh... I would be... I would find this change appropriate, given that the strongest elements are still there. And I think that, um... you know, that's... that's the way I think about this, but the idea of, in order to get support, if the idea is to incorporate some of these elements, then we can ask them to do that. I just don't think it's necessary to make an appropriate argument. Yes?
If it... if it was not an individual landmark, I'd probably agree with you, but as an individual landmark, I think that when... that we have seen in various shapes and forms over the years with the transom, whether it's clear, whether it's blacked out, it can work. They can get... I think they can easily get the effect they want and still respect that element.
Okay. And, yes?
I don't think we're saying that it must be a replica of one of the earlier ages, but there has to be a stronger suggestion even. I mean, they say that they have that joint or that...
Right, and I don't know whether a joint really was intended to do that.
Something more. So I think it needs to be some kind of a transom, but it can be a contemporary, more modern, whatever, but... and I agree in terms of looking at that, the after elevation, the proposed perspective, that is clear that something is missing at the ground floor, and so I think we want... I'd like to capture, recapture that missing.
All right. Since we haven't closed the hearing, do you want to respond to just what the commission said? I think one thing is that you can have a significant amount of transparency, even with putting these elements, which won't take away from the use that you're intending to have over there. So that's one thing. So I don't think... it doesn't affect your program, and I know you have a design sort of approach to it, but I think you've heard the Commissioners would like to have some... yes?
Well, I think with all things, we want to bring forward the strongest proposal we possibly can in this board, and say something that we think is right. Clearly, technically and aesthetically, we can bring that horizontal line in to it at the... at the height that it was probably in the original of the building. Now, clearly, back then, they didn't...
Now, clearly, back then, they didn't have the technology of these glass sizes. An autoclave of this size was hundred, over a hundred years away from production, and I think they strived in all the first two examples to create the highest level of transparency as they could, and now we can, and we are, clearly, by putting the horizontal line in. We're one step off of that, I think that's going to be the commission's overall, but in preference, we will do it clearly, and we'll come back, and as you said, with a modern reinterpretation of that line. Of course, we would like to see what we've spent the time on today to see if that's going to pass, but if not, then I certainly think we can all imagine what our, is, it will be a, probably a narrow relieving angle that goes across and breaks the glass into a transom and a.
All right.
Without decoration.
I'm sorry?
Without decoration.
Without decoration. But I just want the commissioners to understand and, and just get some feedback, and then there, that you had a transom which has, you know, that has the horizontal element, it has vertical elements, then you have the next pane, and then have another vertical element, that shifted over time, so the transom remained, and then the area below the transom became one clear glass. So I think the clear glass below that shouldn't be an issue. I think the question is, within the transom, do, are we expecting to see break? So if we've moved away from the idea that the treatment at this level doesn't have to be exactly the same, but should recall it, then I think the commissioners should think about what we're talking about in recalling it. It could be very simple, which is just a single line and, and very sort of symbolic but noticeable, or it could be something which is heavier, which is framed, so I don't know, I mean, some of you talked about it, so I'm just curious what you would like to see or to make the appropriateness finding.
Yeah, well, I was just saying what I thought, what I would find acceptable is the minimum, so if somebody, okay.
Right, no, no, I'm just, all of you can speak on it, so.
Say they want better or more, but that's what I would want, as the minimum, to see at least that separation and the definition of a transom.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I, while I think that having the verticals to tie in what's happening above would be, would be better, I'm open to look at it, and, and have a good shot.
Okay, other comments?
Perhaps some options.
All right, maybe you can come back then, yes?
You gotta say one thing.
Yes, you can, Dan.
The, the reason we're, we studied it and didn't pursue the verticals is, we want the signage to not affect the architecture of the building. We want it, and as you know, we wrote auto. The chance that it's a four-letter word is, is rare, and, and if we, if it becomes a longer word, it, we're gonna have to study where we place that, so no lot, that sign would no longer be in the transom, and that brings it further down into that large piece of glass, which I don't think is, I think the transom's a great place for the glass. So if we bring verticals into it, I'm afraid that it changes the way it's going to say it's a longer, a longer word.
Right, I think the commissioners would, I think the commissioners may be open to not having those vertical separations, so why don't you, if you can show us that and explain to us if there are difficulties or inconsistencies if you try and introduce the vertical elements. But I think that with the transom, it breaks down the scale, I think it feels more connected to the proportions of the windows above, as Michael pointed out, and I think it will probably grow a great deal. Okay? So we can close the hearing then.